See everybody. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which please stand and join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with earth, kingdom, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we need a review of the agenda at all?
Mr. President, you better call the roll.
Call the roll first.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Gunther.
President.
Mr. Beckman.
President.
Mr. Kleinfelder.
President.
Mrs. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
All right, I knew we had you here for some reason, Chris. All right. Do we have a review of the agenda?
I think they're very relatively short this month.
Okay. See if I have any questions about anything on the agenda. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Gunther.
Yes.
Mr. Beckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder.
Yes.
Mrs. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion regarding the minutes? Everybody's had a chance to look those over? Any questions, comments? Okay, not hearing any?
Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. All right, we've got two presentations this evening, we're gonna start with the Fine Arts update. So, Mr. Raymer, the floor is yours.
You'd like me to use this? Yeah, okay. Yeah, sure. All right, so number one, I wanted to welcome Dr. Rice to Ross, right? So, I know you already live here, but I think you're gonna find it's a great district and thank you for coming in and welcome. The rest of you, I know pretty well, Mr. Beckman, not as well, but I will. And I appreciate you guys having me here to talk about fine arts. The, just so you know a little bit about me, because some of you don't know, I've been here thirty-two years. And like I said to Dr. Rice, Ross is a great place to be. It's where I've chosen to stay. They've asked me to do a year-end review and what's coming up next for the year. Arts are doing great, things are providing many opportunities for our students, both in school and after-school. So, fine arts, we have teachers that are, you know, just like any other, you know, math, science teachers, that do things in school, but we have a lot of co-curricular, extracurricular events that happen with, with fine arts. Pride ourselves on the ability to have students involved in the arts who are also in athletics. We have outstanding girls and boys tennis players, among other sports. We have outstanding kids that were in robotics, nearly in the entire robotics team, our band students, at least last year. FCCLA, many of them were involved, FFA, student government, student council, youth philanthropy group. It's one thing that I've really liked about Ross is that you don't have to choose and be only a band kid or only a choir kid. You can do all these things and, and it's attractive to me and a lot of parents, a lot of kids for that reason. I think our small size helps that. Ross employs, just for everybody, Ross employs five visual art teachers and five music teachers. Fine arts, ten teachers total. Talking about, I'll just go through the different ones. So, Mr. Morlock is our middle school teacher. He teaches our beginning band, I also assist there. He also has seventh grade band, eighth grade band, and he has been running a jazz band after-school. Hundred-and-fifteen students in those grades, six through eight. Thirty-eight in eighth, or sixth, forty-one in seven, thirty-sixth in eighth grade, total of a hundred-and-fifteen. One big thing that he started last summer was called the Jump Start Camp. So, the Jump Start Camp, funded entirely by our Ross Community Foundation, is getting the sixth grader, well, the to-be sixth graders, started in music. So, we provide, we have some teachers come in. We have, of course, Mr. Morlock and all the staff of Ross help teach these kids before school even starts. So, it's like a, we call it the Jump Start Camp. Just started this year and also got awarded the grant from Ross Community Foundation for, for this coming year. So, we'll be doing that again. Mr. Morlock is, like myself, very much into honor band. He had fourteen middle school band students from Ross accepted in the district honor band for this year. Also, very, like myself, very involved in solo and ensemble contests. And he had over fifty students participating in solo and ensemble. In fact, we ran a contest here at, at Ross High School for the middle school students this year because the actual solo and ensemble contest put out through the Ohio Music Education Association was during our spring break. So, we opted to just bring in judges and run it in-house here at Ross. So, that worked really well. And he had over fifty kids involved with that. He, like I said, he's, he's very much into jazz and has, has a jazz ensemble that meets after-school. He does not have a paid stipend for that, but he, he loves jazz and, and loves working with the kids after-school. The other thing that, that a middle school band does in the spring, right at the end of the year, is Music in the Parks, along with a choir, where they go to Kings Island, perform a concert, and, and it is a competition there. They did get second this year among the bands and we're real proud of them. My next group is the RMS and RHS choirs. I lump them together because Ms. Thompson, who is new this very year, has to do both of these jobs. She is doing the job of two people. So, she is doing the RMS choirs and the RHS choirs. Ms. Thompson is in her first-year teacher. She did a wonderful job, very busy lady, and I think she did really, really great as her first year. I'm sure Mr. Martin would agree. These are the teacher, the classes she teaches, sixth-grade choir, seventh-grade choir, eighth-grade choir. She does the show choirs for Next Generation, which is the RMS, and Legacy, which is the high school. She also teaches the high school choir class, high school show choir class for this year. That's one new thing that we're going to be starting this year is a show choir class. So, instead of two different choirs, we are going to have show choir as a class. That's, we tried that a few years ago, we're going to try it again next year. And I, the, the nice thing about that is it should be able to help students' participation in the group and be able to have them being in other groups after-school. Because it is a pretty intensive schedule that they have and so they're, her thinking and our thinking is that if they work during the school day, they have less after-school hours and they can do other things which the kids want to do, right? Very competition, very successful competition season for both Next Generation and Legacy. They, Next Generation, she says consistently placed at the top of their division, ending their season with a grand champion win at Marysville Showcase. Legacy consistently placed in the top three in their divisions, making finals at both Pendleton Heights and Fairfield Crystal Classic. As far as the choirs that, and this is where we talk about, you know, in-school curricular classes versus after-school. Show choirs and after-school co-curricular. The high school choir class, the sixth-grade, seventh-grade, eighth-grade choir, our curricular classes. They, they presented a concert here at school. We had two nights of 'Tis the Season back in December. She has seventy-three in the high school and a hundred in RMS, as far as kid, as far as numbers. And they also placed at, they also competed at Music in the Parks. And another thing that she did this year was she combined them all for an end-of-the-concert, end-of-the-year concert, which she hopes to do next year. All right, next is Mr. Raymer, that's me. Marching band, concert band, jazz band, indoor percussion, the color guard, our pet band that plays at the basketball games and at the football in the stands, solo and ensemble. Honor band students, which we had, I think we had ten, we had twelve this year in honor band. We did have one all-band, all-state band student, Jordan Reed, who luckily for us is a junior, which means we'll have him again next year. He's awesome. He plays piano and French horn, made it for all-state band as a junior. I'm really thinking, knock on wood, he will make it as a senior. We've only had two other kids in the history of the school make it for all-state. So, Jordan is our third, which is awesome. I was asked to do a CCP class for music history. I've always done music history here at Ross, which I really enjoy teaching. It's something besides, you know, waving my arms and conducting. So, music history, I love to teach along with music theory and the learn and instrument class. But this year, we're gonna offer CCP music history through Cincinnati State. We have ninety to a hundred-ten in the band, band program. Last year was our thirty-ninth year at state for Ross Band, which is quite, quite an accomplishment. Very involved parent group that helps us tremendously. We could not do it without our parent group and our parent organization. I'm sure the show choir and the choir has the same involvement. But our parent group really helps us a lot. Long history of excellence with our bands, which I'm sure most of you are aware of. Starting with our concert band, extremely difficult music at our final concert of the year. In fact, we had another piece that we could have performed at the concert, but I just didn't feel like we had enough time and I feel like we were gonna wear out the audience. But the band last year was just, just insanely good. And we, one kid is gonna move on to playing a drum corps and I've already told you about Jordan Reed. We had a really good group of students last year and we have a lot of those same students next year. Twelve students in honor band, I've already told you that, solo and ensemble contests. We ended up going to the solo and ensemble contest run by Fairfield High School. And Fairfield, I have a lot of friends at Fairfield that, that are, are teachers there and musical teachers and they invited us to come to there, so we, we did that, loved it at Fairfield High School. We may do that same thing again. Indoor percussion is about twenty-five to thirty kids, color guard, ten to fifteen. We do have a new instructor this year, Lena Giuliani, who's been here for a number of years, has stepped down. So, we've brought in Sarah Nunley for this year. Jazz band, along with the middle school, we had our first-ever jazz band-only concert. The high school jazz band is twenty-five kids. We played at the Retirement Center in Harrison, along with other school concerts, et cetera. I've already told you about pet band. The other thing that I do that, that I just want everyone to know is I do help in the PAC, our Performing Arts Center, especially helping students know how to run the auditorium, especially lights and sound. We've had several kids that go on to do this, even professionally. I have two kids that that is their job right now after high school, is they are working in that field, along with Cincy Lighting, doing lighting and sound for professional events, whether it's weddings or whatever. We have a kid right now that's gonna be a senior that's working for some musicals, or a musical up in, in Middletown. So, semi-professionally. I love to do that, I love kids to get that experience in the sound and lighting in the pack. Next up, our visual art classes. So, these are our teachers, Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Lawson. Those are our high school, Mrs. Beisendorfer, Ms. Tregaser, Ms. Lep Dravenoff, Draganoff. Those are our RIS and elementary and RMS teachers. Art Club, Pyramid Hill, I'll, I'll talk about these things, murals at, here at Ross High School. The Ohio State House with Tessa Smith and her painting Autumn Blessings. And something called a pug mill, hopefully you know what that is, if not, you will. Pyramid Hill Sculpture Park asked us to paint gnomes for their annual light display. The art club embraced the opportunity to share their creativity with the far and far exceeded their expectations. So, that's what the Pyramid Hill piece is about. They had Miami University regionals come down and talk to the kids about visual arts and brought a printing press, t-shirts for the students to print their own designs. But really, one of the, the highlights to me is with, and this is Mrs. Baker's, our student Tess Smith. She was selected by the Ohio House of Representatives, High School Student Art Exhibition, a two-year Ohio Student Visual Art Exhibition that resides at the Vern Rife Center for Government and the Arts in Columbus. The exhibit is comprised of only ninety-nine artworks, one from each district of the Ohio House. The chosen image for our house district is Autumn's Blessings, a photograph by Tara Smith. So, that's pretty cool. She's, her photographs will be installed in the hallway connector from the Rife Center to the Ohio State House. And I'm really proud of Ms. Baker and Tess for that, Tessa. If you, I, I don't have a, a good picture of Autumn Blessings, I think it was published on our website, but it's a bright, close-up image of a fallen leaf created by Tessa in photography class. If you come around our high school at all, you're gonna see plenty of murals and the murals are all over the school and that's thanks to our art department here at school. A pug mill, all right? A pug mill is something that I talked to Mr. Martin about helping us purchase, along with some PI money. A pug mill is a reclamation of clay. So, when you work on clay projects, and, and we do a lot of clay here at the school and elsewhere in the district, they, they don't always fire it, they don't, they just use it and then it's, can be garbage, right? So, this pug mill, you take it, you put it in there and it recycles it, it makes it as good as new. So, we don't have to buy more, right? So, it's a, a big purchase for us, but I, I was glad to get it. They've been using it. RIS, Elda, Morgan Music. These are the teachers there, Mrs. Villa Lobos, Villa Lobos, Ms. Allen. Ms. Allen is new to Ross this year as a teacher, this is her second year. Both teachers are Ross grads, which I love. The RIS Ensemble performed at the Reds game this year. Morgan and Elda Elementary Concerts throughout the year in our Performing Arts Center. The thing I really like about those RIS and Elda and Morgan is it's not just vocal music, not just singing songs or, it's instrumental as well as vocal. We do have some new classroom instruments coming to Morgan this year. Casey Allen, Ms. Allen also is very involved in the high school band. She helps, she helps the band, she helps out the RMS and RHS choirs as well, which she was a member when she was a school here. The last thing I have, and I'm sorry if I'm taking too much time, but you asked me to talk, I'm gonna talk, right? The drama, right? So, one thing that's been lacking at Ross since COVID is our drama program. We had a very strong program back when I was in school and, and all the way through COVID. We lost our drama teacher and then COVID happened and then, of course, we had financial difficulty and we have not, we haven't been running drama for two or three years now. So, this, this Monday, we had interviews, Mr. Martin organized that. I don't know who we're picking yet, but I know we're gonna have a drama teacher. And we hope to bring this important aspect back to Ross. The thing that I really like about musicals and maybe you're a fan of musicals, maybe you're not, is when you go to see a musical, you're seeing a combination of everything I've just talked about. You, you've got RMS kids in there, sometimes even Elda, Seem Team's elementary kids, definitely high school kids, performers with, onstage singing. You have the art department involved, you've got our construction department involved, you've got parents involved and instrumental music. I, I don't think there's a better way to, to make a whole conglomeration of the arts than a musical. So, I'm hoping that our new person brings that back and it may not be this year, but it might. And we definitely will get there. So, that's all I have, any questions for me?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, are we teaching drama still as one of our?
We don't have a drama class right now.
We don't have a drama class? Okay. And I don't remember, was drama a co-curricular where the drama teacher was expected to be also direct to plays?
It has been both, it has been both. At one time it was, the drama teacher was expected, like a band director, was expected to marching band. But it has morphed and, and we haven't had that, well, we haven't had any drama for a while. Sometimes it, it was like that, then Mr. Martin could speak more to that. But no, it hasn't been that way for, since COVID or before.
So, are, are we doing elementary concerts still?
Yes, the elementary, Elda, Morgan, RIS, they come here, they do concerts here. Is that what you mean?
Different grade levels, different times of the year?
Yeah, yeah, they, it's a specific grade level, every grade level.
Yeah, at some point in time.
Some are Veterans Day, some are Christmas, some are spring.
Got it. Is the middle school band doing any marching anymore?
Middle school band, other than the, we do a future Rams Night, right? So, they come up during the football season, that's when they march. We have not done a parade, which is I think what you're talking about for a while. Part of the reason is we had a lot of students, not just a couple, that did not like it and they, you know, did not continue into high school band for that reason, you know, like, I didn't like it. So, something to consider.
Did they, so, since they've stopped marching in the parades, what happens when they're freshmen and all of a sudden they have to march? Are they matured a little bit at that point?
We train them in the spring, right? So, we do, we do tinge some marching and then when they come in the summer, that's rookie camp, you know, that's what we do with them. Yeah, yeah.
They're hooked in, right?
Yeah.
All right. If you're able to start a musical up again, what time of year, will that be in the spring or fall?
It's been debated. Normally, it's the spring, because we're trying to avoid marching season, we're trying to avoid show choir season, which is January to March. So, the obvious would be April, May. Some schools do it in the fall, you know, before Christmas, you know. I would, I would anticipate, I would probably like to see a fall play around Thanksgiving before or after and then a musical, you know, or two dramas, you know, the first year for this new person, they're not gonna have necessarily a ton of kids, although they might. Two dramas would be great. A musical is quite a big undertaking.
Yes.
If you've never done one, or we haven't done one for a while.
And we usually have several people involved in doing that, right? You'd have a vocal, somebody assisting the vocals, somebody instrumental.
Choreographer, vocal director, music director, usually me.
So, the person that does a drama won't be a regular school employee, it'll just be a supplemental for that person?
It's offered to anyone, right? So, I could do it.
No, I understand that, but I mean.
It's a supplemental.
I mean, we, we've had, recent years, the person hasn't been a full-time school employee, is that right?
Right.
Yeah.
Now, would you, with your, with the musical, like incorporate like elementary school students or middle school students, like in the past?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it depends on the show they pick. But I think, to me, if I was going to, if I was the guy in charge of that, I would definitely do elementary and RMS, because then you've created a feeder, right? And I think that was communicated at the interviews.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Raymer.
You've done a great job, Mr. Raymer.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Raymer. Athletics? Mr. Beck?
Okay. Is that on? So, thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me to be here tonight. I'll kind of start with the, the recap of, generally speaking, this presentation is seasonal just because of the, you know, the depth of information that we could cover. But due to me pursuing professional athletic careers in volleyball this fall, I was unable to walk. So, we weren't able to do the seasonal update. And if you don't know what happened, don't pull, don't pull the surveillance video from September eighth in the middle school gym at 5:14. Don't do that. But nonetheless. You don't have the microphone, Mr. Martin. So, anyways, I appreciate the opportunity to give you a recap. I'll try to make it as succinct as possible, but there's a ton to be proud of, a ton to touch base on just in the, in our twenty-three, twenty-four athletic year. I, I kind of work backwards in this presentation. Oftentimes, the thank-yous are at the end, but I'm gonna go with individuals at the beginning because the reality is everything in between this slide and the last slide could not happen without these people on the board. You know, starting at the top, that's our transportation department. That middle section is our, from Amy to Mickey, is our event workers. And then the bottom half, or the bottom, you know, three or four lines there are just, fill every role between running track meets galore to running our concession stands. And I do have to give a special shout-out to our athletics secretary, Megan Mingus-Hook. She is a rock star, she is the backbone of our organization. And, you know, just to, again, quickly touch base on the injury, when I went down, we didn't skip a beat. She, and I probably shouldn't advertise that, but she did a great job for us. We didn't have to hire a interim or assistant or anything like that. Megan was on the phone with me when I was unable to be actually in the office non-stop. We kept things going and a lot of it's a testament to our, the people in our organization. But I did want to make sure that every one of those individuals was recognized before we get going. So, we'll start with the fall. Just a little bit of background on this before we get into the nitty-gritty of it. A year ago, in the fall, we, we saw our numbers drop significantly as a result of the failed levy and our participation went sky-high, or our participation fee went sky-high at eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. This year was a little bit different because at the beginning of our season, we got the, the financial forecast that allowed the participation fee to drop to a more reasonable number. All that being said, it happened after the fall season had started. So, when we show the participation numbers, you're gonna see that we still didn't make any gains as far as the participation in the fall, just because of the timing of the financial news. But we did see gains in the winter and spring and we'll touch base on that more specifically here in a second. So, there's the kind of historical data. We were, in our first year in our new conference, the SWBL, which has been a fantastic league for us. So, everything is relative to the SWAC in 2022 in the fall. This year, our boys cross-country and girls cross-country team both finished second place. Football finishing third and boys golf finishing second. One thing to note, just with it being a new league and kind of unfamiliar for many, our division is broken up into five teams and there's seven in the other division. So, the league has twelve members. Our division is exclusive to us. So, when we're talking standings, we're only gonna refer to the five in our division, okay? There are a couple oddities to that and we'll touch base on that when we get to the individual sports, but those are relative to out of five, five schools. Second page of the, the fall sports here, boys soccer, second place. Girls soccer, champions for the fourth consecutive season in their league. Just a phenomenal run for our girls and it came down to the last game. Girls tennis finished second place and then volleyball finished second place. And I did want to touch base on the fall. What we found very quickly in our experiences in this league was us and Belbrook were gonna compete for titles in just about everything and it felt like that the entire year. And we'll talk the all-sports trophy in a second. But although the competition was, you know, primarily Ross and Belbrook, the rest of the league provided fantastic competition for us across the board, both on the boys and girls side. So, every, every anticipated benefit of us going to this league has been achieved and then some. And there's news to come on that and we'll touch base again on that at the end. So, celebrating some individuals and I'm not gonna read through these, but we had plenty of representation on our first team. but we had plenty of representation on our first-team All-League. And again, the competitiveness of this league really heightens the value of our student-athletes achieving first-team recognition. You see a ton of representation there for Ross. I'm going to kind of highlight a couple names on there that you'll see throughout this. Maya Bose, we'll talk her track career in just a minute. And then Caroline Chernock, I think this is impressive and worth noting. Caroline's going to be recognized First Team Girls Soccer, and then First Team Girls Cross-Country. So in the same season, she's First Team All-League, doing two sports, managing it incredibly well, and just doing a fantastic job with that. So, in addition to the players that achieved First Team, we also had Coaches of the Year, Jerry Boland, Girls Tennis, Jessica Beener, Girls Soccer. Just real quick on Coach Boland to highlight this, and she will tell you this. If I gave her the mic right now, she would talk about this. Her staff is the most co-coached staff I've ever seen. Everything is shared amongst them, there is no hierarchical feeling to them whatsoever. She was upset because her name got posted on the website, and the Athletic League would not allow the other two names to be listed as the Coach of the Year. So, it's really, she would be mad if I didn't mention Chris Saylor and Cassie Saylor as well. But just a fantastic job done by both of them. And another thing to note, just to speak to the value that people see in Jerry, oftentimes in athletic leagues at the high school level, your Coach of the Year goes to the championship team. Whether it's right or wrong, I think it's case by case. We didn't win the league, and she was so well-respected by her peers, she was still awarded the Coach of the Year honor for Girls Tennis. So, great job by both of them and all of our coaches, regardless of the accolades that came with it. Middle school update, eighth-grade football finished their campaign undefeated and as league champs. Our seventh-grade volleyball team was the regular season and tournament champions. And Ava Bush is third place in Ohio for cross-country in seventh and eighth-grade division. So, and she's only a seventh grader. So, really, really great showing by our middle school teams. The volleyball team, I don't know the exact date of our last volleyball championship, but our volleyball program is very much on the rise. Volleyball numbers are through the roof. In fact, right now, we have volleyball workouts going with around 45 girls. And it's June 12th or whatever the date is right now. So, really excited to see the future. Obviously, the, the middle school levels are finding some success. So here's some numbers, I'm a numbers guy, I like to monitor everything. Mr. Cassiter can attest to this, I'm always checking on different reports and trying to figure out where we stand. As I said before, we lost a ton of numbers when the levy hit. This year, we had 31 fewer athletes at the high school, comparatively speaking, which accounts for about a 12% decrease, and about seven fewer at the middle school. That picks up in the winter as a result of the participation fee going down and the programming that was put in place to combat that. Shifting gears here into the winter, all right? Another successful winter for us. It was very interesting, again, watching the league develop. I felt like every night, every school could have won. And that's what you want in an athletic league. You don't want the blowouts. Yeah, they're great to see, it's awesome when we win. The reality is, they don't really provide much of an opportunity for our student-athletes to grow. And this league just provided night after night of competition and challenge. And that certainly held true in, in the winter. The swimming team, boys' swimming team was the champions, and that was across the 12 schools. So that is not divisional. So, in our individual sports, one kind of nuance of this league that we've had to adapt to is the individual sports don't always separate the divisional titles. But if we won out of the 12 schools, it's safe to say we won our division as well. So, we were the top school out of the 12, and in that 12 is a very well-respected swim program in Oakwood, and we finished above them on the boys' side, finished second on the girls' side. Same for wrestling, that's regarded as an individual sport, so all 12 schools competed at the same event there. Excuse me. First-team all-conference student-athletes, you'll see an asterisk, again, on the individual sports, just to highlight the fact, they do not do All-League titles necessarily in the individual sports. However, these are student-athletes who won in the competition that they could compete in. So Giovanni Greco and Titus Ray, they won their weight class. So I think it's fair for us to say they were the best in the league, so we're going to call them First Team All-League. And then Cooper Burt, which we'll talk, talk on momentarily, was the swimmer of the year or athlete of the year in the pool for us. Joe Stewart, back-to-back years as the Swimming and Diving Coach of the Year. You talk about a program that just continues to find success. Our swim program is that. I mean, it is, it's amazing to watch the culture that he has instilled. Our numbers continue to grow, and so much so that we have a middle school club, kind of, I guess it's safe to say it's a club, but our high school team has integration with it and has great involvement with it. So, I think the sustainability is, is definitely there for our swim program. They actually traveled to Clipper Y and Col Rang for their practice venue after a couple of the YMCA's have changed their model. So we appreciate Clipper Y housing our swim program. Touching base on some successes, our girls' bowling team advanced as a team to the districts, which is great to see. One, I would say, one unfortunate outcome of our league, just to be fully transparent, is we didn't have enough teams this year to say there was a league title in bowling. We probably would have been the girls' team champion if there would have been one, and boys probably would have finished first or second, but there weren't enough teams based on our league's constitution to support saying there was a championship. Boys' swimming, full of accolades worthy of mentioning. At the state, you see those four names, Cooper Burt, Connor Norton, Connor Bennett, and Luke Minery. Fourteenth place in the 400 free relay, eighth place in the 200 medley relay. Cooper finished fourth in the 100 butterfly, third in the 100 backstroke. And all of these are relative to the state championship. So this is in the state of Ohio, Division One, the biggest and the best. And then Connor Bennett, ninth in the 200 IM, and ninth in the 100 breast. All that, all those points up there, and swimming, it's basically where you place, get you your points. That led to us being the 10th-best team in the state of Ohio in Division One. And that may not seem like anything until you look at the enrollment figures of the schools in our division at that point. Division One swimming, we were going up against X's of the world, St. X's, where there's 1,000 more kids. We were going up against Upper Arlington's, the schools that just multiply us by four or five times. We finished 10th overall. So really proud of our swim team. And the majority of those student-athletes returned. Connor Norton's a senior, but the other three will be returning, so we're anticipating great, making great waves in the water next year. That was a good pun.
Good pun.
That was unplanned, too. Also worth noting, as we're talking expansion or divisional numbers, our boys' swim team just came out, we will be Division Two in boys' swimming next year. So the OHSA is going through a little bit of a reform with enrollment, and we can talk on that later. I could probably talk on that for days, so I'm going to avoid going down that rabbit hole. All right, wrestling. Giovanni Greco, Audrey Garcia, and Caroline Davis, all qualified for the state championship, and fantastic showings up there. The state wrestling meet, although I am not a wrestler, I'm starting to understand it more and more, I would say it's top-five sporting events I attend every year. It's a really, really cool atmosphere at the Schattenstein Center in Columbus, packed, everybody's on top of each other. Nobody really knows quite what's going on, but everybody's cheering. It's a ton of fun to watch. And what's really nice for us to watch is our girls' program is starting to take off. Girls' wrestling has been adopted as a state sport for about two years now, I believe. And we have some girls in our youth program, girls in our middle school team, and are anticipating enough to say we have an independent girls' wrestling team probably here in the next four to six years, depending on how numbers shake out. So, looking forward to seeing that develop over time. Some middle school updates, again, you see the standings there. When we do the middle school tournaments, we had done bracketed play with the 12 schools. So, just again to note, trying to distinguish the two, those are out of the division placements, but then we placed in the tournament as well. Wrestling finished first in the division, second out of the 12. Here are some of the good numbers, and again, we finally start to see the trend kind of reverse from the financial woes. We had 29 more athletes this year than we did last year, which is six more than the year prior to the levy. So we've actually gotten larger in the winter than we were the year before the levy, which is great to see. Many schools that go through the financial situation we did, it takes many years to reverse the trend. Now granted, ours was relatively abbreviated, but I'm really encouraged to see that we are back to where we need to be in growing still. And then 10% additional at the middle school. And then the spring, and this one is, I could, I mean, this one really gets me going because of the circumstances that we're seeing right here. So you're seeing a ton of the word champions up there. And I want to bring the board's attention back to last year at the spring, when the majority of our teams on the board were treading water at best. We got to the spring season, people had spent a lot of money on participation fees, our numbers were crushed. Our track team was down to 13 individuals. That was the spring of '23. Fast forward to the spring of '24, and for the first time in school history, our spring athletic teams won four team championships. It doesn't really seem like that big of a deal until you go through what we went through last year, and then see the success that we had this year, and how our kids and our coaches and our community rallied behind these teams. And much of that, again, just a thank you to the board for being reactive and preventative, I guess, a little bit at the levy situation when it changed, and being able to adapt so quickly last fall, because it really mattered. Adding the third sport for free, we had tons of third-sport athletes on our track team, which, oh, by the way, they won the championship, too. First time in almost 10 years. And again, we're talking about a division that is as competitive as it gets, a league that's as competitive as it gets. So I just, again, want to recognize the spring, because last year, all of us were just trying to get to the finish line with how spring sports were. The numbers were just tough to look at. But we reversed the trend and are right back where we need to be. So let's talk First Team All-Conference student-athletes. Typically speaking, or not, not always, you see a lot of Players of the Year on your best team. We were without question the best teams on those championship-winning clubs. Ben Vogel, Player of the Year, Marissa Combs, Player of the Year. Ben is a UC baseball commit, he's only a junior. And then Marissa Combs will be playing collegiate softball at the Division One level as well. So looking forward to following their careers. Tennis, you saw, and this is interesting, Sam Davidson and Chester Parker, I just got to mention the kind of oddities of this. This league does not allow voting based on the spot that you play. So in other words, first doubles or second doubles, it's based on the name. And Carter Pate, who was Sam Davidson's partner for his entire high school career, was out at the DECA World Championships in California, so he missed the league, league event. Not taking anything away from Chester, because he showed up that day and played great, but I do need to make sure that Carter gets some love, because that was Sam's, Sam's partner for his entire career. So Chester gets the All-League title, or All-League recognition there. Coaches of the Year, not enough room on the page. Brad Vogel, Kristy Luckett, Jerry Boland, and Kyle Ratliff couldn't be happier for, for those individuals, but they would all, again, attest to the fact that it comes from the staff and the way the parents and the community rallies behind them. Some postseason recognition, Maya Bose, as I mentioned before, she's, I don't know all of the athletes in Ross history, but if she isn't one of the most decorated, I would have a tough time believing it. She's been on the podium for all four years in her high school track career, and coming into high school, she really didn't have a whole lot of track experience. It was just one of those things she picked up. So last year, she was the Division One runner-up, this year she was third place. Last year, she was Division One seventh place in 100 meters, this year she was sixth place, and just had a great year. The four individuals there, Caroline Chernock, Kaylee Vokey, Mia Jackson, Ellie Foote, and Maya Bose, and yes, I know that's five, they advanced to the regional track meet and in the relay. The reason there's five for a four-person relay, Mia had commencement that night. So Maya, because she was already running, jumped on the relay team for the regional finals. So we had five for four. But a great year for them, super excited about their success and proud of them. Again, just to reiterate the fact that we, we really bounced back. Look at the increase there in the spring, 65% and 208% growth. And we need to see those numbers continue to go upward. We need multi-sport athletes, we need our kids to be involved as much as possible, and I love that Mr. Raymer was talking about, our kids do more than just one thing. A town like Ross should thrive on kids who do as much as they possibly can in their experience, and I think that these numbers are indicating that we're getting that from our kids. So the All-Sport Trophy, unfortunately, we didn't win it. We finished second, and you can see what I was talking about there with the first and second place. It's us and Belbrook this year, it was neck and neck. For those of you who are familiar with the All-Sports Trophy in other leagues, I think we are the only league in the state of Ohio that operates on golf score model for All-Sport Trophy. So lowest score is good. It's really weird. Most other leagues, it's the championship gets the most points. So if you're looking at that and saying, well, wait a minute, we got second to last, no, it's golf scoring. I don't know why. I wish I could explain it, but there you have it. So, just to quickly touch base on some things to be proud of, because of the efforts of all those people that we've mentioned before. We were able to host our first neutral-site playoff game in school history. And, you know, that probably doesn't seem like that big of a deal to many, but being selected by the Southwest District Board, and at that level, the OHSA is actually involved. I think it speaks volumes to the operations of our department, our facilities, the way our community handles things. I think it was a really, really nice gesture of the state to give us that nod. The True Strength Basketball Game, this would probably be the thing that you'd have me talk for 45 minutes and still not be done. How many of you were able to attend? Were any of you able to attend that night? Just out of curiosity. Absolutely incredible night. And if you missed it this year, I look forward to having you next year, because it is, it was a night where our students with disabilities were able to participate in the full basketball game experience. They were the starting lineup, they were the halftime show, and I know a couple weeks ago, our Special Education Department was able to present on that with our service groups. That's going to be the night that I remember for the rest of my career. There's not many basketball games where I leave with goosebumps, regardless of winning or losing. That's the night that I would say, if you put me in my grave right now, that's the night that I'm going to remember. So, I hope that everybody is able to attend that in years to come, because it's definitely going to be a thing we, we do repeatedly. And then, again, speaking to, you know, our operations, we were chosen to host the Southwest District Athletic Board sectional basketball tournament, which was 12 games over four nights, it felt like four months. Ton of work here from 10:00 AM until 10:30 PM a couple nights. Those, those opportunities, in addition to the revenues that come with it, just come with, again, the notoriety of our athletic department, the notoriety of our school community, and how we do things here. So, last slide for me, with content, and then we'll end, again, with some thank yous. This is what we're looking at for next year, and I'm excited to touch base on some of these more off of the mic and when you guys have free time. But one thing that I'm really passionate about is building our brand. I think that we have a great story to tell, I think we have a great brand to sell, and there's no reason why we aren't out there more for people to see. One way we're going to do that, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to show anybody, there's no, no tipping of the cap here, but the Digital Media Guide. So the days of the pen and paper program are gone. If you remember those programs, they were about 40 pages thick, and they cost an inordinate amount of money to print anymore. We have a fully interactive digital media guide, which will allow our fans to access this guide from anywhere in the world by simply just sharing the QR code. We will have that for each season, and I can't wait to, to show that off, because I think it's really going to, again, be a part of building our brand. Alumni engagement, this is something that a few people have, have really helped me with. In a small town, and I say small town, in a small town like Ross, the alumni is really something that is important to me. It's important everywhere, but I think in these type of communities, it's of the utmost importance. So we're working on getting our alumni back involved, if they aren't already, but also just keeping them in the loop. But I think all of this kind of comes together through that brand. And then finally, just continuing to improve our facilities, we've seen big improvements over the last year with our high school gym floor being redone, the track is in the middle of construction. Shout out, please stay off the track, community members right now, we can't have anybody on the track. It's supposed to be done by August 1st, but it's really important that everybody stays off and let the oils cure. And I don't, I don't know exactly what projects, you know, the facilities committee is going to work through, but I can assure you that it's going to be... can assure you that it's going to be great for our athletic department, and looking forward to being a part of that. Finally, just a list of thank yous. Again, Board of Education, you guys make it all happen, the support you provide, our admin team, parents. I mean, again, I don't need to read this to you, but this is really kind of, it's in the shape of a pyramid. But the one thing I think that's really important that we continue to thrive off of here at Ross is, I will go to bat for our youth organizations and say that we have, if not the best in the area, I would love to see who's better than us across the board in our athletic department. So I appreciate the time. I apologize for the length. I'm not going to break my leg next year.
Okay. Couple questions. Okay, you mentioned something about benefits of the new league. Did you highlight what some of those are as you've completed your first season?
Yeah, I think the competitiveness would be number one across all sports. We saw a, especially in the girls' sports, the disparity of teams was a little bit more evident in, or much more evident in the other league, our old league. And that's, that's not a knock on the old league. It's just, across the board, our, our teams have a more competitive matchup. I think that would be number one for me. I think the community aspect, all of the schools in this league are very, very similar. When you go to any of the games, and I know a couple of you are parents or friends of people who are on teams, the communities are very, very similar to Ross. They support their athletics, not only in crowd, but also in the way they do their facilities, the way their operations run. So those are just a couple things. I could go in more specifics if you'd like.
That's okay. So I'm guessing that having JV and freshman programs has been a better situation?
Yes, yes. And I'm glad you brought that up, because that was one of the thing that our former league, having JV competition was tough. Many of the teams in our old league did not have full rosters for JV competitions. But then, as league expansion and shifts happen, the availability of non-conference games has actually been greatly reduced. So even finding matchups for those JV teams becomes increasingly more difficult. And then simultaneous to that, it puts a ton of strain on us, because if we are playing those games not on a varsity contest night, you're talking about another transportation issue, or another officiating issue. Both of them are dealing with shortages. So the JV standalone contests, those are really difficult to pull off.
Do you have any idea what the transportation cost comparison is from the old league to the new league, in terms of the amount of costs we've had traveling north all the time?
I would have to defer to Mr. Castater. I know last year, we did the study.
We'll be able to, we can get that for you.
We've finalized all the spring, paid for all the spring trips and things like that, yeah, they're all done.
Yeah, we can, we can run those numbers.
That was just one of the things I was curious about, because I have heard that as a concern, in terms of, you know, being the southernmost team, I guess.
Sure, yeah. And I could speak just briefly on that. The average trip is about 35 minutes or so, 30 to 35 minutes, which is longer than our previous league. The only, speaking to the divisions, though, the only long trip, and I say long, is Belbrook, which is just shy of an hour.
Yeah.
So that, that, you know, greatly changes or skews that number a little bit. And then, with the addition of another team coming, that'll shorten that average a little bit.
Has there been any attempt to try and schedule the longer trips on Saturday nights and Friday nights, instead of Tuesday night games, say in basketball, or things of that sort? I know that was a consideration that I've heard mentioned before.
Yeah, we do have some creative scheduling opportunities. Some sports are more restrictive than others as to, you know, the flexibility of those contests. You know, just because, again, going back to the non-conference scheduling, plus officials. I'll speak to soccer, for example. Soccer has to basically be played during the week, not because you can't play on the weekends, but because our officials are working youth soccer games where they're getting 40 to 60 bucks cash, and they'll do five, six, seven games in a day, and make, you know, upwards of $500 in a day, where they make 60 doing a high school game. They just say no to high school games on weekends. But yes, we are looking at, and I can speak to the basketball schedule, our divisional matchups will be focused on Fridays. The other sports, again, it's based on officiating more than anything. But yeah, there is an effort to do that.
What kind of interaction have you had from your athletic department with the youth programs and the community? Are you in communication with them?
Yeah.
Coaches in communication with those coaches at that level?
Absolutely. I think, you know, the short answer is our head coaches, our varsity head coaches, they run a K-12 program. So although they aren't the ones making the, you know, the financial decisions, or, you know, scheduling decisions, or things like that, our head coaches are meeting with our youth programs and kind of steering them as to what it looks like moving forward for that program in particular. And then as far as my interaction, or the athletic department's interactions, you know, one thing, and I was talking with Dr. Rice the other day about this, I think that our availability and support of our youth programs through our facilities is, is really unparalleled. You know, it's hard to find gyms, it's hard to find fields, and the way that we navigate, you know, shuffling different things to make sure that our kids have a facility, it's, it's what makes it work at a relatively affordable cost as well.
Do you think the uptick in our volleyball program is, has something to do with the MRAA starting volleyball?
No question.
A number of years ago?
Yeah, there's no question. I don't know the exact number. It was, I think it was close to 140 youth volleyball players, which if you look across the city, there ain't many, there ain't many youth programs that have that number. And I think the other thing to touch base on with that is, sports are following a cycle of club sports, unfortunately. And I don't say that it's unfortunate that club sports are doing it, but people have found a way to monetize sports, especially at the youth level. And so as soon as that happens, you see a huge uptick in how many people are playing. Right, wrong, indifferent, that's what happens. So the volleyball boom has actually hurt other sports, because there's 4 million youth volleyball teams now that play all across the country.
How are we covering athletics at the middle school? Do we have a separate athletic director there, or?
As far as event coverage?
Are you handling that?
Yeah, so I-
As far as scheduling and so forth?
Yeah, so I manage the scheduling and everything of that.
Seven through 12?
Seven through 12, yes, sir. And then, we work with our event managers and things like that. Especially in the fall, it becomes difficult, because you have three different venues potentially going on at the same time, between the high school gym, a soccer match, and maybe a middle school volleyball. But, yes. And then we also have in our supplemental schedule, we have a middle school athletic director position, which is more of a, again, an event manager being there, but also helping me with some of this clerical stuff behind the scenes that may not otherwise, you know, that just takes up time.
You said there is a middle school athletic director?
Supplemental, yeah. It's not, it's not a full-time position, it's a supplemental.
Is it the same person for all three seasons?
It can be split. In the past, it's been split. It's year by year, really. And we haven't had, this year was the first year we really utilized that position, just because of the different things that were going on.
So what, what are our fees, participation fees for next school year?
I think you guys are going to act on that in letter D.
They're the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, same as last year.
Yeah, so it'll be 300. Your third sport is free, individually, not as a family. So there is no family cap, but your third sport is free.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm just curious how the, the interaction with the youth sports and facilities usage is going. Is that going pretty well?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's-
I mean, I can imagine. It's a struggle with timing.
Sure.
But I was just curious how, how all the different organizations are reacting and everything.
Yeah, it's, it's really, I guess the easiest way to say is, it's, the most difficult part about it is, in those positions, there's a lot of turnover, because as their kids get through the programs, oftentimes they leave the positions. We've been fortunate to have some really solid stability in those organizations, to where it hasn't created that cycle. And, you know, even, I think this is kind of funny, when people, you know, jump into the game a little bit. Youth football got me their schedule in February for the following year. So, that being said, our high school schedules are done almost a year and a half in advance. So it's, it's really a product of proactive work, and then looking at things that are musts, and trying to figure it out. But like I said, we've had some relative stability, knock on wood, that it hasn't, hasn't been as bad as it could be.
Okay. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
You did a nice job, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymer, as well. Both highlighted great programs, and I think one of the things that I heard tonight, that I think is really important for us, is we've got to make sure we're giving kids opportunities to do multiple things. And I think, you know, that's something I feel like we've done a pretty good job at. And there aren't many schools that have, I think, quality programs in every area, as much as we do at Ross. And I think that's because of the cooperation between people and all the programs, the administrative philosophy of making sure kids don't get stuck in the middle of conflicts between programs and so forth. So I appreciate that, and I think it's really important. So thank you very much for that. All right, you all are free to leave if you'd like to, or you can stick around. Don't feel bad if you would like to take off. Do we have a legislative report this evening?
There's only, like, well, a couple things. A lot of stuff is still in committee, and if you know anything about our legislature, they're, they're not very quick to act on anything. I mean, there's things that have been in committee since last year. So one of the newest things that have come out, and the governor actually signed into law last month, is a, where every school district has to develop a cell phone policy, and they have to have that developed by July, next July of 2025. So that'll be something, I guess, that we'll be working on and discussing. And the reason being is because there's, I think, just inconsistencies across the board. Some districts have them. Some districts, it's more kind of like teacher discretion, and I guess they, you know, see the need to try to eliminate those disruptions. Other than that, a lot of things that I've mentioned in just previous reports, a lot of this is still in committee, nothing-
Okay.
Nothing new.
Thank you. Butler Tech report?
Mr. Young, Butler Tech did not have their regular meeting yesterday. It's next week. For three out of the last four months, we've been out of sequence, so I'll do my report at that end of June meeting we're going to have.
Okay. That sounds good. Did we have anyone fill out a public comment form? No public comment forms? All right, thank you. All right, superintendent reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I make recommendations, I'd also like to acknowledge Joe Stewart as a proud BCESC employee, as a teacher at Butler, at Union Day, and we love Joe as much as you guys do. Three items. First, Mr. President, members of the board, I ask the board to approve the educational affiliation agreement with Miami University that's as listed. Ask you to approve the overnight field trip for the cross-country team. Ask you to approve the school fees for the 24-25 school year.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve those items?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on those items? Okay, call or roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Two personnel items there. Mr. President, schedule A and B as listed, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Rice and Mr. Martin, if they would like to talk and introduce someone after we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Excited to offer that. Welcome, Emily Doblinger, back to Ross, and came to learn the clear to our interview process, and sitting with her, this is her home, and she's excited. So, super excited to have her a part of the team, leading the recruitment and instruction, which as we talked about, that is our core business. Here at Ross, it's teaching and marketing. So excited to see what she's on, us and the staff knows her, very well-respected and excited to have her.
Great. Very good. Now, where have you been, Emily?
I was at our request, local, so I'm the director, secondary, for the customer.
Okay, great. Good. Okay, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Castater? Four items tonight, letters A through D. We'll block those together for one vote. Those are our normal monthly reports that we approve. There was one donation, and then letter D is approval of a new cash account for our show choir fees for, starting in the 24-25 school year.
Okay, do we have a recommendation, I mean, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on these items?
Not really discussion, I guess just a question. Steve, so the donation that we received is for the Pelton Memorial. Is this a new foundation, or some kind of scholarship in honor of?
Right now, the, the family requested donations be made for use of the science department at RMS.
Okay.
So we're, we've collected a couple. I think the majority of the, of the donations went to a GoFundMe that was run, but we did have one that was sent directly to the school. So that'll go in an account for Mr. Saylor to be able to use-
Okay.
For, for science needs.
And then the show choir item is a situation where the district is actually, the show choir fees have actually been run through the show choir boosters, and now they'll be handled like our other-
Correct.
Fee accounts, correct?
Yes. We'll establish a new account and all of the fees. Boosters will still do their own, their fundraising, and a lot of the support activities, similar to what our athletic boosters do. But the actual fee that's paid to the school will come into the school account, and not to the boosters.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, you call or roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Do we have any board committee reports? I don't believe we do. So let's go around the horn here, and see if anyone has any other comments. Mr. Kleinfelder, do you have anything?
No, just thanks to Mr. Raymer and Mr. Beck for their presentation tonight. Very informative, and that's all I got.
Okay, great. Mr. Gunther?
Same thing. I was involved in sports, involved in band. I think, like Mr. Young said, it's important to group everybody and try to get them to go across those lines that some, sometimes divided in other schools. I know it's, it's helped me out in my career, and helped me out in the future, to be able to, you know, get along with people of multiple backgrounds. So it's very appreciated.
Good. Mr. Beckman?
Yes, again, kind of the same thing. It was nice to, I saw my nephew's name up there tonight for, for track. So, you know, it's, it's definitely helping, helping my family. My, my daughter was one of the privileged RIS ensemble kids that got to go to the Reds game. I think they all enjoyed it. You know, I think we're doing some really good things here at Ross, so I think we need to keep it going.
Great.
Yeah.
Mrs. Webb?
Likewise. I appreciated the presentations tonight. Very, very informative. Just love to see this, just kids in action, and all the success that, you know, we're experiencing in our, in our arts and in our athletics. And, you know, I'll admit, I did have, I did have some reservations when we were switching conferences, and just kind of just seeing the level at, you know, at what the competition is. I think it definitely was, was a good move on our part, and opportunities that we're providing our students. And I want to welcome back Emily Doblinger. I'm excited to work with you.
Great. I did notice that we had a student who received the Butler Rural Scholarship, and then ended up getting scholarship from the, given by all the Ohio Electric Cooperatives, which is quite an honor. Sasha, and that's Craigor, is that correct?
Michael Craigor.
Craigor, yes. You'd want to say Kroger, but it's, it's pronounced Craigor, I think, right? So congratulations to him. That's, that's a nice honor, and some good recognition for him, and, and for the district as well. So thank you to everyone tonight who presented. It was a great meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm sure there's no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Gunther?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.